Right through Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I want to welcome everyone to the regular public meeting for the Lower Gwinnett Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, November 12th, 2024. The Board of Supervisors did meet in executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss matters of real estate and personnel. The board also met in executive session. What date was that, Mimi? I'm sorry.
November 1st?
November 4th.
November 4th.
To discuss matters of real estate and personal. I'm going to first open it up for public comments on questions, comments, or questions, concerns related to items not on the agenda. You just come forward and state your name and address? No, I think you have to push it.
My name is Irene Lewis and I live at 513 Montgomery Road. I'm here again to acknowledge that the noise emitted from the chillers at the Wissahickin Middle School continues, as I'm sure that you are aware. As you know, the acoustic blanket for which we waited all summer and were assured would solve the problem did not work. I could still hear the noise yesterday. We, the neighbors, understand that the school board and the lower Gwinnett supervisors want to help. After all, we're all neighbors in this community. However, we are subject and vulnerable to the skill levels of the school administration, which are limited to the advice and information that has been provided by the Hoi engineers and Harrison Acoustics. The Hoi engineers, now known as CHA, put us into this mess when they specified moving the chillers to the outside of the building in 2018. Harrison Acoustics is responsible for advising the purchase of an ineffective sound blanket. At the last board meeting, the school's business manager, Mr. Bricker, gained approval to spend $24,000 to employ the Hoi engineer, CHA, along with Harrison Acoustics, to design a wall to be installed around the chillers. We're not sure when the actual installation would happen. I can't imagine why they are hiring these people again after the bad advice they gave to the school in the past. I simply want to make it clear that we are worried that we will face this problem again in April when the chillers are running daily again and surrounding our peaceful street with noise again. The school board seems to move slowly while relying on a very limited and sometimes misleading information from the administration. Meanwhile, we only get to comment at their monthly meetings. At this time, we're putting our faith in you as an outside force who can apply the necessary perspective and pressure to help us with this difficult situation. Hopefully, you can help us, and we're looking forward to your support. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nick Militello. I live at 613 Montgomery Road. And I have the same discussion and concerns that I have as Irene and Eric, who is here tonight. My perspective is coming from a place that's worked in a school district for 32 years. I coached at Springfield, not at Wissahickin. Don't hold that against me. And I understand the basic concept. You get taxpayers' money. You try to divvy it out as much as possible to everybody that wants something that needs to be done. And it all needs to be done, and you have to figure out the order. Here's my concern. When the chillers were moved from the inside of the building, they were installed in 1974. They worked, probably maintained, till 2018. That's 44 years that system was in place. That is an amazing return on investment. Why they didn't get a similar system, even though it most likely was more expensive, is beyond me. If it lasted 44 years, they should have done it. That ship has sailed. The concern I have in seeing school districts, and again, I get the budgetary concerns. They put in probably a less expensive system with an air-cooled system, much more common. The problem then was where they put it was just not designed for it. It was not designed with that in mind. So I want to come with you with two things and two perspectives I'd like to address, because I'd like to get that on the table so you know where I'm going with this. One, the sound study that they did was done well, but it wasn't complete and conclusive. And two, all the variables that they had weren't all the variables that need to be put in. And here's where I'm going with that. When they did the study, it was April 19th, 2024. They had the time of the day was in the afternoon. It was 56 degrees. Now, you know, in general, air conditionings have airs that moves the system, and then they have a compressor unit. And that compressor is only going to be fully powered when it's really hot. They can't go there the hottest day of the year or 95 degrees. But what they can do is they have specification ratings on all the technical specs of the machinery. They can use all those technical specs, put it into a 3D model. All of this exists. Determine the absolute max sound that this is going to be creating. That is 110 decibels. To give you a perspective, five decibels is loud. It is somebody that's like speaking very, very loud at you. 10 decibels is nearly painful. 10. Now, there are a lot of variables. The time it gets to from the chillers all the way to our houses. Now, we're only speaking about this from our perspective. There are the children who play in the field, that play the sports, that play activities throughout the day. They're not even, in my perspective, the variable, considering their safety. They're only listening to us because we're complaining. I think the children are also a factor, but that's not my point. My point is the variables and specs exist. They can be put into a model at the max capacity of the system. That's the one thing I think that they have not done, that Harrison could do. He did the test. He did it well. All the information seems to be there. I've read it a couple of times. But that doesn't take into account the missing information, max load, max heat, which he clearly wasn't there for. The second thing is variables. Putting it in the location that they did, they put it at a corner of a wall. The wall is about 35 feet tall, maybe, maybe 30 feet tall, solid stone, few windows, metal paneling, brick paneling. Again, all of these have variables that create an amphitheater. When they did the test study, they went into a location in the field where the neighbors are complaining the most. And I am not even directly behind that, and I'm affected. Those neighbors that are here tonight with me, they are in that line of sight. So I'm still affected. They're worse. When they were doing their test, they were in the bottom of the field. Fine. But that's not actually where the sound emanates from. They go up a little bit higher, where the windows are of all of the said neighbors. That variable wasn't considered. Here's my bottom line. I understand the budgetary concerns. I respect that the school board looked at us, addressed us, and really had empathy when trying to address this issue. I want to get it done right the first time, because if they spend $24,000 and it doesn't work, it's going to be years before they fix it again, constantly pushing it down the road. I just want to get it done right the first time. I think that's always the most fiscally prudent, responsible thing to do. Do it, do it well, and do it once. So that's where I'm hoping that your communication with them will help push that. And the reason I'm coming here instead of them is I do go to them. I do speak to them. I have three minutes. They're not going to take a personal meeting with me, nor should they. But you guys can hear a little bit more of what I'm saying with information that's been provided. You have it. And say, okay, this person sounds reasonable, and none of it's out of the line, hopefully. So I want to thank you. You guys really do a great job listening to us complain. But thank you for your attendance or information, and I appreciate your help.
Thank you, Mr. Militello. I just want to push back on one thing. I do think that they would take a personal meeting with you. These are your neighbors. Oh, I'm sorry. Can you not hear me? These are your neighbors, and we're all neighbors. I know that me and Mr. Tursky have gone to people's houses because they've called and asked and had a question. So I shouldn't, you shouldn't assume that that's outside of the realm possibility.
Eric, Mr. Rudolph is going to be speaking next. I think he did, no. He is truly a professional. He'll probably give you a little bit of a background. He is an engineer, and if I understood him correctly, he installed facilities in places for pharmaceutical companies. So he's not only just an engineer, he's an engineer specialist, but that's him to tell you. And I think he did ask for that, but I'm going to let him defer that. I myself did not ask. So you're right. I should not assume that.
So, but based on what you're saying, so far, the neighbors have not met like face-to-face with the school administrators with this issue?
That's something that he's attempted, so I'm going to let him answer that question. Because I think that would be important for you to hear. I'm listening to him saying.
That's a little bit disturbing. Okay.
Yeah, I think it would be too, because I mean, he's not going to make a decision for them. He's an informed person with experience that might be able to help them, but. But thank you very much, and Mr. Rudolph will be able to answer what you're asking, because I think it's important.
Yeah, yes. I'm sorry. Just need to state your name and your address.
Good evening. Eric Rudolph, 537 Montgomery Road. Okay. Just to fill in a few things. This is when I first contacted the township myself, was to call Mimi. And she was very helpful in being open and supportive of taking a meeting with the school district. Okay. I put out a meeting invitation. Mimi wasn't available that particular day. I looked, I found out about that after. I was just trying to get it organized. It was around the 4th of July, and things were running very loud. Okay, and there was a lot of activity in the area. That invitation also went to the administration, and they refused. Okay. I even went over there to try to understand their schedule, okay, so that we could find the nearest opportunity to speak. And they declined. Okay, that's.
Do you know why they declined? I mean, did they come back and say, we don't feel it's appropriate to meet with you, or rather, we haven't got time in our schedule at the current?
They just have just declined. Okay.
Was it the administration you approached, or was it school board members?
The administration. This is strictly the administration. They've been, they were invited out multiple times. Okay. I invited the school board out. It was short notice. But right before school was opening, or the week school was opening, we were having a heat spell in. We had previously gone August 19th to the school board meeting. They were talking about community engagement, and we invited them over to have beers in our backyard, the whole neighborhood. Okay. That was kind of a fun thing to say at the time. But then the opportunity came up when we saw that school was closed that day for, I forget what the occasion was. It was August 27th. Okay. Okay. I believe it was the week of that, August 26, 27. And we invited the whole school board and the whole administration to come over into our backyard. My wife sent out the invitation. And we only got one response from one of the school board members saying, sorry, I can't make it. And I've heard the issue. Heard back from the administration saying, we don't need to, I don't want to misquote it, they declined. Okay. To come over and set up, okay, I had a ladder, I had sound meters, and the opportunity to experience what we were experiencing. Again, they declined. Okay, so it's been difficult to communicate and really help appreciate what's going on for them. And we continue to reach out. You know, it's, I feel like I'm pushing myself on people. I don't mean to do that. It's just that when you want to solve a problem, you have to get in front of people. You can't just get it off an email. There's so much you miss in context and so forth. So we've made, we've made, we've extended ourselves many times in this manner, and we've been effectively rebuffed along the way. We've provided multiple ways they could mitigate the noise. Those were all dismissed. And they weren't just thrown over. I sized things. Okay. I looked at square footage of fence area, looked up Grainger catalog part numbers, effectiveness, pricing, sent it to them. And it was ignored. JCI has lots of add-on components that mitigate these issues. I sent them the white paper that reviews them. Okay. And saying, these are the types of issues that you need to be looking at. Those were ignored. So that's the challenge we have. I want to bring it back, I think, because this is going to take a while to unwind, okay, and resolve. Because people have to sit down and talk, and I think that's the biggest challenge. And it has to be people who are motivated to sit down and talk, to have this. I think what Irene said was very true. Irene started the process in our neighborhood to go out and get signatures from our neighbors. And we know different people have different effects, but at the same time, some neighbors, like with Deidre when she was here, she said, I'm further down. I don't feel it, but I feel it. I feel for my neighbors that they feel it. And if I had an issue like that, I would do the same thing. And as Irene said, so would you, because you're our neighbors, you're part of our community, and that's what we do. And I'm confident that the school board would do that as well.
Is that what you would like us to address today, is to help facilitate a conversation with the school district in some capacity?
I think that we need to speak to the right people who have, to be able to move effectively at this time. Okay. The clock has started. Projects like this, I've done, been around, they're going to take 16 to 20 weeks. We're into the cooling season, okay, and we've got a real problem. They're going to turn on that equipment, and we could like fall our way right into another safety issue. And there's a real safety issue out there. It's 110 decibel source. On paper, that source can only remove three to five decibels of sound on paper. I'm going to leave it there, because that's the simplest thing to do, because that's when you look at, you know, who's liable here. Well, if you take 110 decibels, you subtract three, you got 107. You still got a big problem. 107 decibels. Let's go back to that. People start to lose their hearing within five minutes of that. That's published data from the CDC. That's their recommendation. Okay, that's a big deal. So how do you manage that? I spoke to the fire marshal, just to give you context of the noise we're feeling. And I think he shared with me that the fire siren here is 110 decibels. Okay, as far as what its output is at the source. Could you imagine that siren going off during a hot summer day from 6 o'clock in the morning to 9 o'clock at night? That's our backyard. Those are our back fields. You hear it. You can hear this all the way down to Ambler Yards. You can draw a circle around this, you know, our house, or around that chiller that has a radius of 900 meters, and it's violating the noise ordinance. This is a very gross issue. And when I go back to it, I I had shared, and this is just an email I sent on September 30th. I was in Spain. It's a great time to write.
We have a conditional use here that we have to get to.
Yeah, I'll move on. Yeah.
We do have that email, though. We do have that email. If it's the same email that you included Mimi on?
No.
It's a different email.
It's a different email. I don't want to sort that. I was just, I was trying to reply to the.
I just wanted, so for us, as far as we're still, we're still engaging with the, with the school district. We understand that the school district is working through their plan. I know that you have concerns, or Ms. Lewis expressed concerns about who comprises the group that's facilitating the execution of that plan and the development of that plan. At this moment, I want to know what, what is your ask of the township, or what is success at this moment look like for you? Is it us facilitating a conversation with the school board or the school administration?
I think the school board would be the right place to have, start the discussion as far as what they understand, as far as what the community needs.
Okay.
I think that's where it starts.
Okay.
I think the next piece is, from a timing perspective, we have to be very clear and practical about what we do. This has been going on for a while. I know it's been short-lived here. And I don't want to be too long at this, at the podium. But if we're not going to be able to solve it on time, okay. And the solution does include going back to where it was. That worked.
Putting it inside?
Yes, that's.
We can't dictate that. You understand.
No, 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 I understand that. I'm just saying that. I'm not saying, but the school has to process that. They have to ask that question.
But then, we hear you.
Okay.
What your asks are, we can't accomplish that.
No, no, I agree. I'm not, I'm not asking you to.
We can't tell the school district what vendors to you. We can't tell the school district where to put their chillers. I mean, we can't do that. You all understand that, right?
I just want you to know the history of both.
Right. No, and I hear you, but the school district probably has a different view of their vendors than you guys. Right? I mean, you're sort of asking us to pick sides here.
No, I'm not asking. No, 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 no.
That's what Ms. Duckett said she's going to do, and that's what we're going to do. I mean, but I just want to make sure you understand sort of the scope of our, the breadth of our reach is not quite as great. We're just a, you know, we're just a local community supervising board. We don't have that kind of power reach or authority. So, but let us do this, and let's see what, let's see what happens. Let's see what happens with that.
I was, I'm sorry. I was just responding to questions from the board. And I was wanting to make sure that the key thing here is communication, okay, amongst the varied parties. The second part is timing, okay, is critical, because we're going to have to go through this again. And it's not just our discomfort, which is very painful. Okay. I don't want to have to bury myself in my own backyard. I'm 65 years old, okay. And I want to enjoy my time in my yard. And I like to truly enjoy it in peace. Okay.
So we certainly, we've drawn that message for sure. I mean, we appreciate you coming before us. We get it.
Yeah. I think we won't limit it to the school board. We're trying to reach out and say we can facilitate a conversation with the school district, whoever's willing to meet. And we'll be in touch. We just wanted to make sure that you understood, I guess, the parameters through which we can operate and.
I do, but at the same time, at some level, if you can then give us direction. Because any regulated industry, okay, has the same fundamental requirements as our building codes, okay? Within pharmaceutical, within nuclear space, whatever, okay. You have to make things, you don't make things less safe or less compliant, okay, in any situation. And so who then is that arbiter? Okay. Help. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any additional comments, questions, concerns from the public on items not on the agenda? Is it? No? Okay. Next up, we have the consideration and the decision in order for conditional use application. I'm going to turn it over to our full sitter.
Thank you. As the board recalls, you heard testimony on two evenings, September 24th and October 22nd from Ambler Yards and their tenant Entegris, E-N-T-E-G-R-I-S, regarding their conditional use application for the erection of two chemical storage structures on the property located at 300 Brookside Avenue. The record has been closed with regard to testimony. There was a draft decision before you for your consideration. The draft decision also contains an order that would impose about 15 conditions upon the applicants to ensure that the public health, safety, and welfare is preserved in connection with this application, and that all steps are made and taken to ensure that this is a safe operation for this particular location. It also makes the operation and the structure subject to the jurisdiction of the Township Building Inspector and Fire Marshal. It also includes requirements for cameras, fire alarms, containment systems, registration with appropriate state agencies, a submission of emergency spill containment plans, hazardous materials management plans, hazardous materials emergency plans, all to the satisfaction of the township and the Township Fire Marshal. So if the board's so inclined, you could make a motion to approve the conditional use in accordance with the draft decision that's before you.
Any questions from the board? Comments?
I just have one question. Neil, what has evolved since our last discussion on this? We've added more constraints?
Yes. As you may recall, Entegris had three of their officials here at the last meeting, and we incorporated their testimony into the decision and added additional conditions to the decision. You may recall that they talked about entering into a contract with Clean Harbors, which would be the emergency response provider. So we added a condition indicating that they must have a contract with Clean Harbors or another emergency response provider approved by the Township Fire Marshal. So we incorporated that testimony and added more conditions to the decision. And it had, those conditions have been reviewed by the applicant, and they are in agreement with the conditions.
Thank you. Additional questions or concerns from the board? Questions, public? I'd like to make a motion to approve decision and conditional use application in front of us for Ambler Yards. Is there a second? Hold this in favor.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the consideration of ordinance number 550. I'm going to turn it over to Jamie, I think is online. Is Jamie online?
Good evening. You have Carly Kiesling with PFM.
Oh, Carly, are you taking over for Jamie?
Uh, yeah, him and I are going to tag team, and I do see that Pat Scott from Obermeyer is on as well. If you would like to let him give an intro into the ordinance, and then I can touch on some of the high-level points from the parameter standpoint.
I am turning it over to Pat.
Happy to do it. Thanks, Carly. Thanks, everyone. It's nice to meet you. My name is Pat Scott. I'm a partner at Obermeyer, Redmond, Maxwell, and Hippel in Philadelphia. We're bond counsel to the township. And as Carly mentioned in front of you, is an ordinance that would authorize the issuance of bonds, tax-exempt bonds in the amount of up to $6,500,000. And the purpose of the bond issuance is to finance the acquisition of real estate and development of that real estate into, at least the first phase of the development of the project, into a new public works facility for township. The ordinance itself is quite long, but, you know, just to hit the hot points, if you'd like me to just describe it, it just authorizes the issuance of bonds. It authorizes an application to the Department of Community and Economic Development for approval of the bonds. Under Pennsylvania law, the township has some restrictions in terms of the amount of bonds it can issue, none of which are really in play here, but we nonetheless make an application to DCED. to DCED. They approve it and keep a record of it. The ordinance would authorize the execution of a bond purchase agreement with Stiefel as the underwriter to sell the bonds. We're in a little bit of a tight timeframe here. We're trying to issue these bonds as the first part of this project prior to the end of the year. And there's some, some basically, some tax benefit or some interest rate benefit to be had by doing it that way. We'll do the five, up to $6,500,000. And Carly can explain that's really going to be about $5 million. And then next year, there would be kind of part two of another up to 10 million. And again, those numbers are part of the finance plan that PFM has presented. So effectively, this just authorizes the issuance of the debt, authorizes the issuance of the bonds and the execution of the documents. And makes some covenants to recognize that this is a general obligation of the township. And that's really the sum and substance of it. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll, I'll hand it over to Carly to maybe walk through the plan of finance a little bit more.
I have a question. Does this verbiage include how, how the bonds will be sold? Or that's a separate step from this?
It does include, it does include a statement about how the bonds would be sold. And if you, I think that's in section. Let me just see here. Well, acceptance of proposal for the purchase of bonds in section 11. What this ordinance does is it authorizes the execution of a bond purchase agreement, which will be appended to it, that Stiefel will agree to effectively buy the bonds from the township. And then they'll resell them using simple terms to the general, members of the general public or institutional investors. And there's a pretty, pretty thorough agreement in place that, you know, requires the township to meet all the conditions of approval and proper authorization, things like that. And then Stiefel will, you know, effectively go into the market and, and sell the bonds. And once, once they reach what we all kind of believe is kind of the right result, we'll come back to the township staff and ask for authority to, to actually execute. And so I, and Carly, maybe you have the timeline. I don't know off the top of my head. It's relatively quick in terms of a pricing. Do you want to just walk through that real quick?
Yes, I do think there was a handout that was pulled up earlier. I can, I can run through that quickly. So we could skip to page two, the topics page. I want to touch on just some stuff that, that Pat mentioned while he was going through the ordinance. So I know that Jamie has been before you and has discussed the financing plan. And the parameters ordinance has a $6.5 million figure in it, whereas you have seen a plan of finance for a $5 million issue. That is still the plan when we go out to market for these bonds. To Pat's point earlier, there are some tax advantages to doing 5 million. If you look at the middle part of that page, I think it's bullet five. It touches on what we call small issuer exemption. So with the township, they're able to have some arbitrage benefits by issuing within 5 million. So that's still the plan. So with the ordinance tonight, you'll approve 6.5 and the 6.5 is really to allow us, PFM and Stiefel, the financing team to market the bonds accordingly based on what investors are looking for that day. And it gives us the flexibility to resize bonds as needed. But because we're not sure what is going to be in demand that day, we have to, through the state, do what's what's called a maximum parameters ordinance. We have to do a maximum par amount that will not be exceeded on a total aggregate basis. And then that also is on a maturity by maturity basis. So we typically upsize the borrowing about 20% just to give us the flexibility to move around par as needed to achieve the desired structure, which in this case is a 20-year level structure for the township. In addition to the ordinance maximum par amount, you'll also see in Pat's, I think it's one of the attachments in Pat's ordinance, there's a maximum coupon rate. We have a 5.5% in there. That doesn't mean that we think you'll receive 5.5 for this deal. It just also allows the flexibility to make coupon choices throughout with Stiefel throughout the pricing process. And at the end of the day, we will only execute what you guys authorize us to borrow, which is the $5 million transactions. We just wanted to clarify why you see a higher number in the ordinance. It's just to allow for flexibility, given some of the state legislation that we have around issuing debt within Pennsylvania.
Is, is there a time? What is the time period that the bonds are available for purchase? Is that a day, a week or what?
Yeah. So, and with, so that's a great question. So with the parameters, another advantage to passing the ordinance, it allows the financing team to pick the best day in the market to go out and market and price the bonds rather than be tied to a meeting date of the township. So if the township approves the ordinance, we will work with Stiefel to kind of gauge the market, make sure that things are looking good within the market and interest rates that day. And we will decide on a pricing day to go out and market the bonds during a couple hour period. I believe there is a timeline in the latter portion of this handout on page four. The goal for, assuming an ordinance is adopted tonight, the, towards the end of November, I think right now we're targeting the 20th of November prior to Thanksgiving to go out. So assuming things look okay. The beginning of next week, we'll have plenty of conversations with Stiefel about what they're seeing in the market. And we will decide that if the 20th is the day, we will go out that morning and they will ultimately market the bonds to investors. And that will be the day that we will lock in rates. To Pat's point earlier, we'll have authorization from the township after we, we review sale results and show final pricing results and make sure everybody is on the same page and everybody's okay with how things panned out. And then the township will say, okay, we can lock in rates and that'll be the day that rates are fixed and they're fixed from there through settlement for the life of the loan after that. So from, oh yep, no problem. From pricing, it's about 30 days, give or take to settlement. So right before the end of December, prior to Christmas, if we lock in rates on the 20th of November, the township will have funds in an account in hand. I believe it's the 19th or 20th of December is the targeted settlement date. And then the, yep, the maximum parameter schedule that I alluded to earlier, just the way to read it, that you do see the 5.5% in column three. Like I said, that's just a flexibility metric for us. It will be well within a 5% coupon, but just given DCD and how we have to show debt for, within, within the state, it is a top of the threshold, but we surely expect to come in under this. It's just a flexibility matter. So happy to answer any other questions regarding the ordinance and the maximum parameters amount if, if needed.
Anyone from the board have additional questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the public? Before us, we have a.
Just for the board's information, I want to acknowledge that Ed Murray from Stiefel is sitting in the audience too. It's part of the whole team. They've mentioned Stiefel, our underwriter. The company is our operator. Ed is Stiefel.
Thanks for being here.
He does a wonderful job.
Yes, he does.
We appreciate you coming in person, Mr. Murray. Thank you. Included in our board packet, the memo from our township manager articulating what we are considering. If there are no additional questions or concerns, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 550, saying the parameters for bond issuance. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For attending.
So for everybody on the call, I will, I have all the signatures. I have the latest versions, I think, of everything. So I'll get them out to everybody tomorrow by FedEx and email.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have a discussion about the 2025 budget.
It's not even eight o'clock and we're doing fine. Okay, so I'm doing a presentation on our 2025 budget. I know that you guys, it's in the packet and as you received the booklets that you have. This booklet, the same as that you have gotten in the past, and it's basically, you know, 50 pages of line item details of all of the finances. So although I use this every single day and I need to use this, I try, I'm going to try to give you guys a bigger, a higher level overview. I just think it would help you understand it better. Just to know the different components and the relationship between them. So the first sheet that we're looking at here is the 2025 budget summary of all of the funds. This sheet here basically shows you the fund balance at the end of the 2023 audit. And then I'm showing you, not the revised budget, but our actual 2024 projection from where we think we're actually going to be at the end of 2024. And then in the purple, you're going to see, that's where I'm showing the 2025 proposed budget, the revenues, the expenditures, the surplus or use or addition of reserves. I've listed the discretionary transfers separately. It's very important, if it's an inner fund transfer and removing money from the general fund to the rec fund, what occurs is the rec fund shows that as income and the general fund shows that as an expense. And it washes out and it really just overinflates the revenue and expenses. So I'm trying to leave that out so you can see exactly what it is we're bringing in with, with that involved. Basically, I'm going to present to you the operating funds together. You can see I did a, a subtotal line there for the total operating funds. The operating funds, basically, that's the monies that come in from the outside sources, the tax revenue, the permits and things like that. And the expenditures from all of those are the true monies out the door that don't include the transfers of, of things that we're paying for. The next grouping of funds I did was the sewer funds. So the sewer operating fund is our only fund that actually generates income. And it generates that by billing out our residents for their sewage treatment. And we bill that out and that generates income. And the expenditures are basically, we pay Ambler treatment to treat that sewage and that's the largest expense. Any surplus that comes in from the sewer operating, we normally put that into the sewer capital. The sewer capital is the fund that we use the reserves of to maintain the infrastructure of our sewer system that we own. There is some capital that it runs through the sewer operating, but that's a portion that we pay Ambler for things that they need to do for their system and their infrastructure. So that's the sewer funds. And then the next grouping that I'm going to go through are the capital funds. And the capital funds, we're really looking at the capital reserve and open space, which is grouped together. The highway aid fund is the liquid fuels. We get money from that, from the state off of the gas tax. That's fully restricted and we can only use that for certain projects in highway. And we use that normally every single year for paving contracts and things like that. Traffic impact, that fund does have some restriction for traffic impact fees that we charge developers, the Act 209. Those monies can only be used for building up the highway system for the, the extra traffic. We did have a reserve. We don't any longer because we did the traffic signal in the intersection here. Because that fund, we can also use that fund for other things. We just have to make sure the Act 209 is used specifically for that. And then we have the storm water management fund. And the storm manager, management fund, we really have like the tree contribution that we get in from developers. If they're not replacing the trees, we self restrict that and we only use that to plant trees throughout the rest of the township in other ways. And then the capital reserves, again, that's, we normally take any operating fund surplus and sometimes we make a transfer into that fund to do the projects that we want to do. So based on those groupings, I kind of want to go through some charts that John Farrell, who was on, really did a great job in helping me produce. And if we can get to that first slide. Okay, that should be in your book. So these are the general operating funds, the first five that I spoke about. And basically what we're looking at is, we're looking at $11.5 million of monies coming in. Of that 11.5, taxes is 80% of that total. You can see that in the inner ring. The taxes is the 9.2 million. And something that I want to bring to your attention is, out of that 80%, earned income tax is 61% of that. Our earned income tax is the biggest revenue that we bring into any of our general operating funds. We also have real estate taxes. That's about 19% of the total taxes that come in. That's about 1.7 million, as you can see there. We also get revenue from non-tax, which is building permits, licenses, things like that. We do have interest income from the reserves that we have on deposit. We get state aid in, which is for fire relief and for our pension, both of which are restricted just for pension and fire relief. So when that money comes in for fire, I have to turn around and send it back out within 60 days. And we do get pension, pension monies, which helps reduce the amount that we have to put in for the MMO for our pensions. We have other there listed also for the 840. And the other is basically like the Wells Fargo lease across. We also, that's our cable franchise tax. And then we also bill out for the school resource officer, special detail that the police officers do in the crossing guard and we get reimbursed for that. So that kind of makes up the 11.5. I also want to tell you that in this proposed budget, and I did put it in the memo, that we are proposing that there's two street districts that we don't think that we should be assessing a tax for. It's not a real estate tax, but we do an assessment. And I know Mimi did some research back. We've been doing this since 1986, but we really don't see a reason because the streetlights are there for safety. They're not there for decorations. So we're thinking that we really shouldn't assess that. So this budget has it taken out and that would be the $5,000 we took out. So that you're aware of that. Then if we go to the next slide. So this is the general operating funds and these are all the expenditures. I know it looks like there's a lot there. So let me say, so we're looking at, excuse me, $10.6 million is the expenditures to go out in the general fund. On the inside circle, I'm trying to show you which department these are basically coming out of. So we see police there, which is about 48%. You'll see a slice of the pie there for rec. If you remember in our last meeting, we moved the park maintenance and wages for the park, we moved into, out of the rec fund and into public works. So public works piece of the pie is a little bit bigger this year than in previous years. We also have planning and zoning. And then the fire and ambulance. So the expenditures for fire and ambulance, we have a discretionary 165,000 that's in the budget. That's what we had done in previous years. We also have about 206,000. That's the real estate tax millage for the fire companies, which get processed out. And then that also includes $30,000 for the ambulance. So we have that. One of the things that I wanted to point out is in the, in the purple, you can see that the police department is 48%. And in every slice of this pie, you're going to see salaries and benefits. We're a municipality. We're very labor intensive. That's how we work here. We're not in research and development and doing anything like that. We're just really here, you know, maintaining everything that's there. So when you look at the salary and benefits for the police, you see that's a very large piece. What you have to remember is they, we, they have to be staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 52 weeks a year. So there, that's about 8,700 hours that they're staffed. They have the 20 officers. So that's why that's so large. The salary and benefits for the other pieces, they're working two thousand eighty hours a year, to see what I'm saying, so when you look at that. But our salaries and benefits takes up about sixty eight percent of the total, ten point six. Okay, but then we also have things in there for like the professional services, engineering and architects. You'll see that in planning and zoning. We have, technology is a new account that we put in every single department, which is now, and we moved some of that out of the capital because we're taking like the laptops or workstations, our softwares, things like that. It's more consistent now because we're all going onto the cloud. It's not like we're buying servers and it's, you know, big, large expenses at one time. So we moved that into the different departments. We have our insurances in there and we also have debt service in here. So they just spoke about the bonds. So what, what I've put in the budget here is seventy five percent of the debt service for 2025 is in the operating funds and twenty five percent you're gonna see in the sewer funds. Okay, and that's that little slice there for the two seventy eight. Are there any questions on the operating funds?
There's just like a list, a really, really tiny sliver.
For what?
There's a tiny sliver in green that says other. So that's just miscellaneous things, fifty one thousand.
Oh, for the rec, yes. So salary and benefits is mostly for the rec and that's going to be your fall fest expenses and your other expenses for the other programs that you put on. It is really small. We wanted to show it in there.
Okay.
Since the park maintenance and all of that has been moved out and now is in public works, it looks very tiny. If we move on to the next slide. So now this is the sewer operating and the sewer capital funds that I spoke to you about. And this is the revenue that comes in. As you can see, eighty five percent of the revenue that comes in is from the billings of the residents for treating their sewage. It's our sewer billing. We also have, seven percent is interest income from the reserves that we have in those two accounts. We are earning interest and the interest rates have been higher than they have been in other years. We also have a grant in there and that's called the H2O grant. I think you can maybe go into more explanation of that, Mimi.
So that's a state grant. It's for capital projects. It's paying for the sewer connection, for the restrooms that are gonna be built in Ingersoll Park for, for part of that and also for upgrades to Forest Manor and Open Door pump stations.
What's the total for that grant? Can't see it. What's the total for that grant?
Two hundred and forty thousand.
That's the entirety of just that grant?
Yes.
Okay.
If we go to the next slide, that's going to show the the sewer operating and capital expenditures. As you can see, the biggest part of that is what we pay Ambler to treat the sewage that we're billing all the residents out for. You also see a sliver there in dark green for the debt service. That ninety three thousand is for the five million bonds that we spoke of earlier today. There's capital projects that we have for two hundred and fifty nine thousand. That's for the township's infrastructure. That doesn't include the one hundred and fifty that we're paying to Ambler for their infrastructure that they wanted us to put in the budget for 2025 because that resides in, on the operating side. Just wanted to make that differential for you.
So this would be in the event that we need to like scope our own infrastructure with cameras or making sure that everything is connected?
Yeah, the capital projects on our end to make sure that our infrastructure of the sewer system underneath us is, is good to go. It's what we own.
I think the, the Forest Manor project is gonna be done in twenty four, but Open Door is probably gonna be rolling into twenty five. So it's partly that, the inflow and infiltration that you talked about, where we televise and then do any necessary repairs. And there's also the Hydra excavator, I think, is in there from the silver line.
So a capital, our capital, our large equipment purchases are also in our capital funds, both the general and the sewer.
Do we anticipate any changes in our relationship, financial relationship with the Ambler Treatment Plant? There was some talk about a few years ago that they were gonna change the structure of the management.
They had filed an application to the PUC. Is that what you were referring to? Yeah, they dropped that.
Okay. But then, so that, that doesn't impact our financial agreement with them going forward?
No.
Okay.
Within the expenditures, I also wanna point out the salary and benefits. So although we, the general fund charges the sewer funds for use of the building and the copiers and the office supplies and things like that, there are salaries and benefits that go directly there. So we have our sewer superintendent, Dennis Gravenese, is a hundred percent there. Also Linda, who's the, she's part-time and she handles the reconciliations of the sewer billing and stuff like that. She's a hundred percent there. Then we also have between public works, finance and admin, twenty five percent of our salary and benefits are allocated to the sewer fund and that's where, where that slice comes from for the seven fifty. So before I get to the capital, just to kind of recap, so our, our general operating funds, we're showing revenue coming in of eleven point five million and we show expenditures of ten point six million. That leaves us for 2025 in the proposed budget, a surplus of a little over nine hundred thousand dollars. And of that nine hundred thousand surplus, we have budgeted for two discretionary transfers. One for one hundred and sixty five thousand, that's going to the fire protection fund and five hundred thousand that's going into the capital reserve fund. Okay, so that you kind of know where we're going with that.
Can you just, and I didn't see it in here and if I missed it, I apologize. So compared to twenty twenty four budget, are we consistent as it relates to the surplus or are we higher, lower?
So if you look at, if you look at the summary of reserves now, the 2024, I don't have the discretionary pulled out of there and we did have that one point two million dollar transfer that's considered an expense that we moved for the escrows that we moved. So if you add back at one point two seven, we're looking at about a surplus of eight hundred and some thousand dollars. So we're relatively the same. Wait, let me look at the thing here. Here we go. For the operating funds, we're running a little bit higher, but that is because we've moved some things like technology from the capital budgets up to the operating funds. Our wages and benefits increased a little bit. And what was the other one? Do you remember, Mimi?
So, so let me just back up a little bit to just, as you know, we, for the last few months, several months, we, we did a very detailed analysis of all our capital projects and how we would pay for that. We have a ten-year, very detailed ten-year capital plan and how we would, would use the reserves. Melinda, the last couple of months, went through, the, the budget had, as happens in many, many municipalities, over the years, had just really gotten stretched out. You could tell there'd been requests to they want, somebody wanted more detail here and somebody wanted more detail there. And it, it just, over time, it's so cut up. It's just hard to figure out that there's money in so many different accounts. So it's hard to follow. It's hard to execute. So Melinda went through and did a major cleanup of the operating funds. It's much more streamlined, as you can see, and that's gonna get easier to follow. There was also so many changes. We know there's actually, I think there's a little bit of fluff in, in the budget now, just from all of those changes where we wanted to make sure folks had enough to, to operate. That will be easier to clean up going forward. But that was all setting up so that then, that Melinda can do the next step, which is a, a multi-year forecast. So that especially when we knew we have the, the bonds coming and additional debt service and, and we can filter all of that in then, and we'll be bringing that back to you early in twenty twenty five to talk to you about more long-term plans. One of the things that I asked Melinda to do as, as part of this then, as we started really taking a look at it, is there were some, what were essentially operating expenses in the capital funds? That just didn't make sense. And, and the big one that Melinda talked about was technology. I mean, it used to be every so many years, you'd spend a lot of money on a server or, you know, there were periodic spikes in spending. But now it's not. Almost all of our, of our technology is either annual contracts or pretty steady equipment purchases. Every year, we buy about five laptops and, you know, one little printer and those kind of things. So it just made more sense because all of our capital funds are relying on reserves, that it made sense to get that into the general fund. So we make sure we have the annual operating revenue to pay for what's essentially an annual operating expense. And we did that for storm, so that was about eighty thousand dollars that was pulled from the capital fund into the general fund. And then we did the same thing with stormwater. There was some, we have a contract to mow basins and to do street sweeping. We do it every year. Those are just regular maintenance. We had them in a capital fund. We pulled them into the general fund. I think there's a, one more step next year we're gonna need to do for that in the stormwater management fund, which is this mesh of operating and capital. But we need to just have a little bit more time to talk to all of you about whether you think we need a stormwater management fund, whether we, we should have this, if so, what the purpose of it is. And it was just too much with the budget to be pulling that off too. But there was about a hundred and forty thousand dollars, there was about sixty thousand of stormwater management. So it's about a hundred and forty thousand of expenses that we pulled into the operating fund. So we've been spending it. We were just using reserves every year to pay for that, which just was complicating the planning. But you have very healthy reserves. So it's when we wanted to get some of this in to, it'll just make forecasting going forward simpler for really accounting for all the expenses we, we need to be able to pay for on an annual basis.
And we should keep the operating, in the operating funds, so we know what that is because that's very different than the capital plans that we're doing and concentrating on. Let me see here. So we were on with the sewer, okay. The revenue and the expenditures.
You're going to capital. I'm sorry I messed you up.
That's okay, right. Well, actually, the, the next one that we, the next one that I did here, this is, since sewer is operating, it does have a piece of the capital, the sewer capital. Mimi wanted to show you basically what our, our general operating funds and our sewer funds together would be. So the, this chart here is just kind of showing you the total. So if we take in the sewer operating with the capital and the general operating funds, we're looking at about fifteen million dollars in total revenue. It's sliced up the same way that I just talked about on those previous slides. But in case you kind of wanted to see it at that level, I think you can go in and see that and, and then it makes sense. And then if you go to the next slide, this is again, those same funds pulled together for the expenditures and you can sort of see how it goes out. The total expenditures there is the thirteen million. And if you look, we're anticipating in the sewer operating, we're looking at, for the 2025 budget, a surplus of two hundred and five thousand dollars. And normally we would put that into the reserve for the capital. Then we can go to the next slide, which is the capital funds revenue. So if you look at that chart, our total revenue is three point two million dollars. Of that, in the pink there, you'll see liquid fuels. That's our highway fund. We get that from the state, from the gasoline tax, and then we have to spend it and it's restricted. We are also including in this the five hundred thousand dollar discretionary money that we're giving from the surplus of the general operating funds. Interest income, which is about eighteen percent, we have in there at six hundred and five thousand. We get that from the reserves that we have in the capital council and deposit. And that's very large. We also have grants in here, which are forty eight percent. And that, I have that grants written here. Let me see, let me get to that.
That's excellent.
Does this actually include all of our grants or just a portion of the ones that we plan to use?
What we're supposed to get.
Expect to get.
Yes. So that one.
A quick reminder, you know, we, we're awarded grants. We actually, ninety nine percent of the time, we have to do the work. We have to build a project, send closeout reports and then get reimbursed for it. Sometimes you can get reimbursement mid, mid-project, but it's for work that's already done. So our expenses and our grant reimbursements are not always in the same calendar year for budget purposes.
Do you, it's, so I guess the, the more practical way to explain this is grant money that we qualify to receive reimbursement for?
And expect to receive in twenty twenty five based on work that will be done. Either like it's done now and we're applying for it, but we're gonna get the reimbursement early in twenty five or work that we expect to get done early enough in twenty five to receive the reimbursement in twenty five. Okay. It's a timing issue. It is also a guess what projects will really be done by like September, October, twenty twenty five.
Yeah, and that one five includes what? The watershed for three hundred and forty five thousand grant, the bridge at Bethlehem Pike, seven hundred and eighty six thousand, the rotary at Texaco, fifty, the partial land, the Rakpe, four hundred thousand. And it also includes the body cams for the police PCCD. We get a reimbursement grant for fifteen thousand. That's in that total, so that you know what that is. And then if you go to the next slide. So this is the capital fund expenditures. So this is the, the projects and the things that we're planning on doing out of the capital funds in 2025. So you can see the orange piece there is the highway aid. We are gonna go a little bit in our reserves for that. We only are probably gonna get three hundred and sixty eight thousand from the state, but we're, we have some reserves in that account. So we've put in road paving of four hundred and twenty thousand. In the stormwater fund, tree removal and the tree giveaway is the hundred and seventy two thousand. I know that we have a lot of trees that are in the trails and on the parks that need to be taken down, so that's that number. And then the stormwater upgrades for seven hundred thousand. That's the Little Nishamani Stream Bank for a hundred and fifty four thousand. The, there's the old Bethlehem Pike Stream Bank for two hundred and forty, the Marion Avenue Culver, a hundred and thirty, and the Penland Flood Study for sixty four thousand. There's some permitting costs that are in there and the Knight Road curbing for thirty thousand. That's all on the stormwater fund. In the, the, the green, which is the capital reserve fund. So what we have in there is, we have some money, the hundred and eighty nine thousand for police capital purchases. That's the body cams, which we are gonna get reimbursed in the grant for. The PCCD, but we normally get that, don't we? Hopefully, yeah. Okay. It's in our budget to get it, so. There are, and I think Paul, Paul is still here. I don't know if he left. If he wants to speak on it. We're, we're getting rifle suppressors for twelve thousand, some tasers for twenty. There's money in there for a shed. That's thirty thousand. I don't know whether or not we plan on doing the shed because now we are doing the public works building with the bonds. So if we can hold off on that.
No, so the shed is actually something they need for accreditation. So it's, they need an enclosed place when they impound vehicles. They, they need a locked location to impound vehicles. So we're just calling it the shed. So I, I don't know. That's definitely something is that, that money's a placeholder. We would be coming back to the board and it might need to like be on top of this building or, because we don't really have space for this. We're struggling with this one. It's, um, anyway, honestly, might need to rent space somewhere like in a rental self-storage place or something. I don't know. We have to get creative with that.
Have this?
The, yeah, that's where we just got booted out of a municipality who was letting us use their space. Talked about this a little bit more. Got tired of us.
Thinking we might be able to push that off a little.
Yes.
Is there another municipality that will be willing to partner with us?
Not only one of them is now, it's Serene Tunnel, who was one of our tunnel agencies, has a facility that walk rail line with Pino Ranch. The garbage hatch that runs the bottom floor. And they would give us access to the whole second. It's an incredible thing, but if the length is at the end of the tunnel, we'll, we'll be blocked. Is what I discussed with me that if they see that something is coming. We just don't think it's necessary to spend money on something. Or need a few years.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Oh, no, no, please. And we're also for the police, getting one new vehicle and having it fully equipped, which is about ninety six thousand dollars. It's very expensive to put a police vehicle. So that's the police capital purchases. In public works, there's two hundred and thirty one thousand that we've budgeted for. That's gonna be a bucket truck, which is about two hundred and ten thousand. Although I think we can sell the old bucket truck for about seventy thousand. We have that included in revenue under sale of assets. Then there's a lawnmower and attachment, which is about twenty one thousand dollars that they have slated. Then there's a lawnmower and attachment, which is about twenty-one thousand dollars that they have slated. The two hundred and thirty-six thousand for the building improvements. That is the replacement of the roof for about a hundred and fifty thousand. Landscaping of ten thousand for out front, a roll-up door for eight, and the HVAC at Penland Woods for about twenty-eight thousand. Separately listed there is the Old Bethlehem Pike Culvert for nine hundred and fifteen thousand. And then the parks and trails. What, what's in there is the Penland Train Station for a hundred and K, the Texaco Site for the same amount. From the master plan, the Ingersoll Park upgrades for six hundred and thirty thousand. The Oxford sidewalk and the trails plan, which then totals to about nine hundred and twenty-six. And for the infrastructure and rebuilding. So we have about additional paving that's not in the liquid fuels of the four hundred. We have an additional four hundred thousand that we were going to do. We have the Turwellan Signal, the Welsh Signal, the Dagger Road Master Arm, and the inspection of the bridges. And that total, and those amounts are detailed out in the budget that's in the detail here in the verbiage. In case you want to know, that's where I'm getting all of that from. And that's about one point one million dollars. So that is all of our funds, sort of grouped a little differently than going through each one of the funds separately. I think it makes a little bit more sense to look at it in groupings. Do you have an other question?
The paving that we have that's outside of the liquid fuel, where is that? Or what is that for? Is it, is it just, we're just doing additional paving beyond?
It's beyond what? The amount that we got from liquid fuels? Yes. If you want to speak on that. Here, keep your mic.
We just went over a ten-year plan of what roads need to be done. And spaced it out kind of more evenly. And it just comes out to more a year than liquid fuels is providing us. So we had to increase the paving budget a little bit.
Okay. There's not like a specific, it's just that the execution of the ten-year plan.
So like every year we would need to do this.
Okay, yeah.
Can I go back again to the, sorry to dwell on this. Neil, back to the sewer treatment plant in Ambler. Some years ago, it seems like we were warned that the facility might need something like, you know, sixty million dollars worth of work or something. That, that, that's the figure that sticks in my head. Do we, are you attending on a regular basis their meetings to understand what their projections are for the maintenance of that facility?
No, I don't attend their meetings on a regular basis.
Tessie, I think I know what you're referring to. So the, years ago, that was a number that was given based off of the TMDL that we're under and the upgrades that would have to be made to the Ambler wastewater treatment plant. But we've been in this group to do an alternative TMDL for the last eight years to avoid having to put a, all of these improvements into that plant.
Okay, that's wonderful. And I knew that was going on in parallel, but I'm, I'm just a little concerned that we, how do we find out what their status is? Ah, Fred.
So I attended the last meeting of the jointure of the, all the municipalities that send sewage to Ambler.
Okay.
Next year, they do have some capital expenditures that they're planning, which is just some electrical work. But in the future, there is a plan to replace pumps, the big Westinghouse pumps, which would be in the millions of dollars to replace. They weren't real specific on the number, the timing. They just put it out there that that's in the future. And I think with their capital planning this year, they hope to have the design for the pumps, which will then give them what the cost will be in the future. So they're going to do electrical work this year and planning to replace those pumps, which is a big expenditure. So hopefully next year, after they do the plan, they'll have an estimated cost on the replacement. But their, their capital expenditure will be higher in the future for that than it is this upcoming year. They're a little vague, so that's probably about the best I can give you.
I have one just question. And just real quick, just so that would put us, because we only pay a share of the capital, something like a couple million dollars, not sixty million dollars, just so that, which we easily have in reserves.
Are you, are you good?
Yes, I just, it occurred to me that I hadn't heard anything about the facility in a good while, and I was wondering what the status was and if we had regular communication with them and so forth. Because if it was sixty million, it would, would be, you know, take some strategic planning there. Okay, thank you for that.
I don't, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. All right, I just have one more question. While Fred was talking, it reminded me of another public works question I had. Do we need to, or are we planning any temporary solutions for the vehicles that are like outside at nine seventeen prior to the construction of the new building? Do we need?
We purchased a shed this year.
Okay.
That replaces a rotten-out shed. There wasn't much stored in it, so we're going to move some stuff.
Okay.
To try to free up space, but there is no real solution to getting everything inside or undercover. So, for example, our plows are all outside. We'll just make sure we hook them up to trucks ahead of time. And unfortunately, some of them will just be outside until we can operate.
Okay.
Well, now I have another question. But Fred, going back to the sewer treatment plants, and they're replacing pumps, but was there any conversation about the implementation or application of the filters? I know that, I live in a portion of Lower Guiney that gets my water from Ambler, and that we contributed or paid the matching dollars for a filter to be applied so that, you know, some of the, some of the water can be better maintained as it relates to coming to us in Lower Guiney. Did they talk about applying that filter?
Though I think that's Ambler Water, and it's the carbon filter.
Yeah. They didn't talk about it.
Front, yeah.
They didn't come.
Store.
Okay.
Separate, separate departments there.
I just hoped that maybe we all got together and had conversations about water in and out. As it relates to the, the storage of our plows outside, will that cause any, should we have concern as it relates to the deterioration of the, of the functionality of the plows because they're stored outside?
Yes, if it's, if it's.
I know they work outside.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying.
It's long-term, it's long-term outside. The things that are damaged, and it's, it's mostly by sunlight. You would think it's the bad weather.
Oh, rust, but it's not.
Sunlight deteriorates all the hoses, the plastic parts and everything. They become brittle from sitting outside. Yeah, maybe a little bit of rust because they're outside, not inside.
Okay. It's not a major concern.
So like one year, there, it's okay. If it's multiple, you know, five, ten years, then yeah, it's a problem.
Okay. Sounds good.
We should build a building and fix that.
Yeah, but the building's not going to be built for years.
I teed it up with Fred. It's all I could do. He said no.
I don't know. Are there covers?
Short-term, no. Long-term, yes.
I'm sorry, Melinda, that we've taken away from your presentation.
No, not at all. I, I kind of got through all the slides. I just sort of wanted to give you our budget more in a grouping so that it makes more sense.
This is helpful. I'm just speaking for me. This is much more helpful way to visualize it and pictures.
I love Brett.
I know you do. I told John that. John, you get all the credit. Yeah, so, but if you have any other questions, it's in your book is line, is all the line details of how this is all pulled together. I just think the charts were easier and the summary of all funds kind of groups it so that you know what's operating and what the capital are.
Can I ask a specific question about public works issue, I think? The, we don't have any bridge projects scheduled for twenty twenty. But I'm assuming there are some issues with some bridges in the township? Guys, that's what I'm.
So we have from PennDOT inspections identified, I have them on the five-year plan. They're in.
Smaller bridges.
No, there's three larger bridges. I don't know, Chad, if you remember them off the top of your head. There's three or four bridges that are in that ten-year. I mean, one of them is over a million dollars, so I'm figuring that's like another LSA. But we have so many grants already spoken for. I have them a little bit further out, which, and we've talked about this with Chad, that they, they're not, you know, they're not falling down tomorrow. They're just something on the radar. But one of the reasons we have the bridge inspection study in this, in the twenty twenty-five budget is to inspect smaller bridges that aren't inspected by PennDOT to make sure there aren't any others that would need attention sooner rather than later.
Yeah, my, my concern was just, do the bridges need to be addressed sooner rather than later?
Oh, I do have the bridges. They, they are in the, they're, well, they're, they're further out than five years. But in the capital plan, which is in the, one of the summary reports in the beginning of the budget, on page, the bottom of page one are the bridge projects from PennDOT inspection reports. So it's Hunt Seat Drive, Cambridge Drive, Forest Hill Drive is the big one. That's the million-dollar estimate, million-dollar plus. And we, so we're guessing a little bit now, like every year, we, we sit down with engineers and the staff and look at, at the, the timing for these to see how they work. Right now, kind of roughly set up as twenty-seven, twenty-nine, and thirty-one, twenty, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty-one. And mostly that just means they're a couple of years out. They're not the next thing that we're going to do. And it's because there's so many other projects. We'll see how they go. Also be evaluating funding, you know, if bridge grants opened up. I know Chad has mentioned the retro reimbursement.
Retro reimbursement, state bridge bill. So how the inspections work for the bridges you own. PennDOT inspects any bridges you own that are greater than twenty feet in length. So there's, there's three that are listed in the capital budget. PennDOT inspects those every two years and provides reports for the town, for the township. And we monitor those in relation to the long-term capital plan to see when you might need to address those. As Mimi mentioned, nothing immediate within, you know, the next couple of years or so. Any, the smaller bridges less than twenty feet, PennDOT does not inspect, and the township has to do it on their own. So one of the items in the budget for next year is to start a regular cycle of inspecting the smaller bridges that PennDOT doesn't inspect to start to get a handle on what any short and long-term needs there might be for the township.
Chad, just as a question, because we're talking about bridges, is there an update around Gypsy, was it Gypsy Hill? The bridge near you?
That's, I think that's the Hunt Seat Drive one.
Is that Hunt Seat Drive? I think it's Gypsy.
It's technically, I think, Gypsy Hill, but it's like approaching Hunt Seat.
The bridge that's listed in the budget is on Hunt Seat Drive. I think the one you're referring to is on Gypsy Hill Road near Hunt Seat Drive. It's still not on PennDOT's capital program for the next four years. We have, you know, requested that PennDOT place it on. It hasn't been. We've also requested that it be put on the, the next state bridge bill, which is sort of the prerequisite to getting money on the tip. So we're keeping after it along with staff. And hopefully, in one of the future updates of the tip, PennDOT will include that bridge for funding.
Is there any other things that we can do to?
I think just to continue to coordinate with Montgomery County, PennDOT, and your state legislators to make sure that it's getting priority.
Chad, I do want to thank you. If you had, if you were the influence. PennDOT fixed that very narrow opening from going south on two oh two and entering Plymouth. They came in and tore up that island and made it very tiny compared to what it was. So that, that's a big improvement over what it was.
Yeah, that was something the township reached out to them back in the spring. So it took them a little bit of time to get to, but yeah, eventually, they were able to get out there and address it.
Yeah, it's much better.
Chad is being modest by township. He means.
Yeah, well, I, I expected it was Chad, but it seemed like one time you told me I don't have much influence over PennDOT. But thank you for getting that done.
No problem.
Chad, when they, when PennDOT puts, assuming PennDOT puts the Gypsy Hill Bridge on their radar, do they, do we have any input in like the design of the bridge and whether it, you know, I don't know if it can be widened a little bit so it's easier for pedestrians to walk? Do we have any input?
You're supposed to, and it's just a matter of, of us keeping in close contact with them once it does give funding. But yeah, they are, they are trying to make more of an effort for municipalities to be more involved in the design, particularly when it comes to incorporating pedestrian facilities more into projects.
Great. I didn't even know there was another bridge back there.
That, Janine, that was a good question, because the bridge near me that goes on my way to the post office on Plymouth.
Of the county.
The county did that without any input from us. And so that was like, one day it wasn't there, and the next day they were, they closed off the road and started building it. So it's always good if we can have some kind of heads up when that work's going to be done.
May I ask about a couple other line items? The Oxford Park spend for twenty twenty-five, seventy-five thousand dollars, is that the Gaga? Or is that something else?
Can we say the good news?
We can say, so now, we, it can be the Gaga pit, because we found out late this afternoon that we received the state grant that we applied for, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah.
So I didn't want us to spend anything till we heard about that, so that anything we spent would be reimbursable. So the seventy-five thousand was, was just an estimate of, of what we'd get done this year, getting started with that. So Gaga pit clearly should be top of the list for Oxford Park.
It should not cost seventy-five thousand dollars.
You need to graciously.
He'll do it for fifty.
Fifty dollars.
As long as he will assume all of the liability, I am happy to let him, let Zach go to town.
And then I have one other question about the Texaco Park Gateway. We budgeted a hundred thousand dollars. And I, I mean, we don't even have a plan for that yet.
For Texaco?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we're working on it. The Parks and Rec Board is working on it, and we've, you know, been meeting with Clint from the Rotary on potential partnership funding opportunities.
So maybe that we don't even spend a hundred grand in twenty. Going to have it as.
Okay. And that grant placeholder is just a placeholder? Okay. I assume that for almost all, right?
Yeah, I think for Texaco, it's just because we are hoping that the Rotary is able to raise a substantial amount of money to contribute.
All of the other grant amounts, though.
Are legitimate?
The, the future year, some of the future park ones are guesses. You know, based, based on experience, anything from twenty-four and twenty-five is either an amount we've applied for or received. Most of it now we've received. The only one I think we're waiting for is the multimodal for Penland Station Trail. Isn't it the only one? Uh, the Penland Flood Study. Watershed thing.
Nice, we have a grant for that.
We'll keep looking for them.
Yes, we will.
That amount of money is in the budget, but we know it's, it's, you know, asterisks that we must search around, look around. Try to find better.
Bring it to anybody's attention. You knew Mike was going to find it. It is absurd.
I'll, I'll still do it for twenty thousand, if you want me to drive somebody a key over there.
Anything else?
No, none for me.
Jimmy, you normally have a question or two, no? Am we good?
I think we have to thank you for all the tremendous work that you, you took. It's very evident in, in the visual aids and the way that it's organized and the ease in reading. And I think accessibility, not just for us, but for the public in general. So thank you.
Yes, and John did the graphing for me, and so.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Mimi. Thank you, Melinda.
No problem.
Anybody else who wants some thanks, I, I think that we greatly appreciate the ease and, and having the budget be simplified and accessible.
And in color.
And in color.
I am trying to work on graphs for the monthly reports also, so that you guys will go in and look at them and kind of see like at first glance, kind of where we stand or whatever. So that's in process. It was just a little like put under the rug because of the paycheck thing and the human resources and all that. And then Mimi wanted to change the chart of accounts and, you know, and there's the bond issue. That work-life balance, remember?
Yeah.
Remember the part of your interview where you said you like a challenge?
There you go.
That's what we heard. We already like a challenge.
There you go. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Are you willing to make a motion to advertise the preliminary budget?
Are there any additional questions from the board?
No.
Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to advertise the 2025 budget. Preliminary budget? Do I say budget or preliminary budget?
Preliminary budget.
Preliminary budget. Is there a second?
All those in favor? Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Next up, we have consideration for the invoices that were included in our board packet. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the invoice report. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up is the, the approval of the minutes from our October 22nd, 2024 Board of Supervisor meeting. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the minutes? Any questions, comments, or concerns from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for our October 22nd, 2024 meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is our supervisor liaison reports, which are included in our board packet related to any meetings that have occurred. We're going to move on to staff updates, and I know that we have a presentation, but before we get to the presentation, any other staff updates? Turn it over to our chief.
Good evening. Before I get to the videos, just want to thank the board. You may have noticed there's been some VIPs in town in the last few months. And I want to thank Lieutenant Gargan, Sergeant Henry, and Sergeant Sweeney for preparing for the visits. We've sent people out of Lower Gwinnett when, you know, we've been to Lower Providence, we've been to Whitpain. Because Montgomery County was a hotbed. And the return on investment is incredible when we get 100 officers that come for the First Lady's visit on Sunday. And other municipalities just absorb all that. So you, you need to, I want to acknowledge that to you that it's been great. And, you know, that day started at 5:00 in the morning and didn't end until 2:00 in the afternoon, but the men and women in this department stepped up and. There was a letter sent from the Michigan State Police acknowledging how well our Wishaken event was. And that they were, we're the cream of the crop when they did all these visits throughout the whole country. So it was really, it was really a proud moment for our department. It was exciting to see and we're glad it's over. But it, it was an exciting time to see some of these people come into town and safely. So everything went really well.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you for all the.
So to make it more of a lighthearted viewing. I mentioned bus patrol at the last meeting. We're still seeing 60, 75 violations a week.
Wow.
I want to give you a couple of examples. We're not going to show license plates. We're not going to show.
You should.
No, we're not going to show that. There are four cameras. We're only showing the one. And we're going to play this one again. This is 202.
It's out right now?
Yeah.
Somebody's trying.
They don't realize because there's no.
So we're going to replay this. This is 202 and you got me, Jamie, right? Once that stop arm comes out, technically you're legally, you're supposed to stop. So right there, that's a violation. That's a violation.
The white car, the white car knows it, but it's like.
Right. Exactly. There's group mentality.
Yeah, I was going to say it is, I, I, you know.
How are you getting the license plate?
Well, there's another camera. We're not showing you that view. We're, we're not.
I suspect the herd mentality will, will diminish somewhat.
It will.
Yeah, I mean, on a road like that.
You got to go back, remember, Jamie? Go back. Yeah. This one here is not a violation. So the bus technically has to come to a complete stop before they put that arm out. And you'll see here the bus, this is Bethel and Pike right up the street. Those arms out and the bus is still moving. So we did not cite that person.
Oh, wow.
We, maybe just show it again, Jamie, we can see what, what we're talking about. So here comes the stop arms coming out and the bus is supposed to be stopped already and it wasn't. So that person did not get a violation. We denied that one. These are all reviewed by the company. Anything they think is a violation, they send to us. We verify it all. I think you have to go back. This is a new one? Okay. Now it's the same one.
No, it's the same.
Oh, it's different. Oh, this is Plymouth Road? McKean Road, this is McKean Road. And here's another one.
Oh, my gosh.
He almost stopped though. He almost, she or he almost stopped.
Yeah, show that one again. I'm sorry. I, I was wrong. It was McKean Road.
I mean, how do you know that the kid, I guess they see the kids going the other way and they don't.
I mean, but this isn't even like, this is just one lane each way.
Right. And this is.
And they know they're driving over the white paint.
Yeah.
He went real slow though. He went real slow.
It's okay. If you go slow, it's okay. You can disregard stops.
Well, and that's, a district judge once said, what time should we stop enforcing the law? Like people that run red lights at 2:00 in the morning would say, what time do you want us to stop enforcing the law? Where are we? I forget what street, Jamie. You jumped ahead of me. What was it again? Oh, no time to stop. So. We consider this, the operator really didn't have enough time to stop and they were not citing. So.
So like they threw it.
You'll see, you'll see. Like right there. But that's the company saying that's a violation.
Well, they're going to be on the side of.
Correct. They want us.
Well, because they also, there's a monetary incentive.
The rest of the people stopped.
Everybody else stopped.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, but you can go with the yellow.
You can go on the yellow then, Melinda.
Yeah.
There's one more that's just really bad.
Where is this?
You decide you're not going to.
Right.
Do you send anything saying, hey?
No.
Okay, you just.
Yeah.
We should.
So they were going Narsetown Road.
Talked about it at a recent meeting, like.
Watch this one. This one's just hysterical. It's not funny. This is, this is several times a week on Narsetown Road.
Not, not right now.
Okay, okay. They stop. Oh.
The other side.
The other side. I don't think the other side realizes they have to stop.
They don't. That's.
No, dude, they eventually stop.
Yeah.
Oh.
They know.
Well, because they're seeing the traffic on the other side stop, but. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I was going to say. Are, Chief, are you?
I think we do need to tell people because I think there might be a confusion.
Not, I'm not saying show the videos, but I'm saying like, give an example of if it's a wide road like 202 or Narsetown Road. As, what is the law, right? If there's a median, you don't have to stop, but if there's no median, so educate the public, you know.
We did, we did update everything.
Yeah.
I mean, we did a really good video with, with Second High School with the students involved.
Yeah.
All this was explained.
Oh, yeah, I know. I saw that video. I just think we need to keep like letting people know.
Over and over.
Yeah. Keep letting people know.
We're, we're going to get compliance because the same people are probably hitting that road the next day.
Yeah.
And it's a $300 fine.
Yeah.
But.
But I think any chance we can get, like newsletters, you know, social media, just little reminders about the law.
Chief, are you getting repeat offenders?
Not yet. Not that we're aware of. We, the biggest complaint has been people thought it was a scam when they got this notice in the mail. And they thought they were being scammed. It does not. And then they were afraid to open, there's a link. You have a specific code.
Where you can see yourself.
You can see yourself, all four, all four cameras watching it.
But we have something on the website that explains it's not a scam. Here's clues it comes from. Because I would tell you, if I get something like that, I, I wouldn't click the link and I wasn't sure. If it didn't come from the police and even then it probably would be something.
Maybe we show like a letterhead.
Yeah.
He had a printout from the company. Yeah. That came from the co. No, he got that in the regular mail.
The link is to the actual video of your car, right?
Correct. What you just watched, they can watch.
And they get a picture of them passing.
Correct. Yeah. There's a front camera, a side camera, and a back camera. There's two in the back that are catching the license plate. And every one of those cars on Narsetown Road, the license plate is clear as could be.
The camera is able to pick up the license.
It picks up everything.
Can you see who's driving the car?
On the front, front view, you do get a pretty good picture of the person. Did you say this Friday, Jamie?
I, I would say to them.
Yeah.
There's not a median in the middle.
You got to stop.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now I understand like if everybody's going and then you're like, I was stopping and then you're like.
This is, but this is not, you know, the volume are the four-lane highways, but the offenses on every street.
Yeah, I've seen them when, as my kids are getting on the bus because it's on the same side of the street. The door. So they are not crossing the street and you can see them getting onto the bus. People just drive, they just drive by.
Coming this way and I'm going this way and I'm picking this up right in the middle so nobody can pass up like that. I'm shocked that this happened. I thought it would not be like this. I'm shocked.
Is this consistent in the other municipalities?
Yes. Whitpain's very busy also.
Ambler as well.
Ambler's not seeing his money.
I know, Melinda, a few years ago, when my kids were still in grade school. They redid the bus route in my, my area so that the kids wouldn't have to cross the street. That they get on and off on the same side of the street that they live on. So that, that probably helped, but then. That didn't reinforce that people need to stop anyway, even though they can't see the kids necessarily. If that stop sign's out, they need to stop.
Yeah, they did that on Plymouth Road, those families at Plymouth and Gypsy Hill. They had, bus had to reroute. So, because people just. Blow by as, if they're coming the opposite direction, they figure, well, the kids are already getting on the bus or getting off and going this way and they don't wait for the arm to go in and just.
So if it, it's a, if it's a police officer pulls you over, it's a $300 fine, but it's an automatic license suspension also. It's an automatic hearing in front of PennDOT. It's.
So the fine that we're having with this is, was $60, did you say?
The fine is $300.
Oh, with the cameras, that the people are getting in the mail. With this.
It's 300 too.
It's 300?
That's $300.
These, these people are getting a $300 fine?
We see 50 of it, right?
We're getting 50.
We get 50 of it.
50, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a $300 fine regardless of whomever pulls you over.
Correct. This is a $300 civil violation, much like the red light cameras. So it's not a criminal violation.
That's significant.
And, and there is a right to appeal. Nobody's taken it yet.
Nobody has appealed at all?
Yeah, I wasn't driving. You can't prove it was me driving. I mean, that's the only thing that you could.
That's the only thing you could say.
Driving your car. Which could be legitimate.
Yeah.
You're still liable for your car though, if it's got your license plate on it. I've gotten tickets for my daughter.
Thank you so, thank you so much, Chief.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I mean, more than we ever have with this type of violation in the past.
We're going to see some income over this. But I, our approach has been same as the school district that we're not looking at it for that reason. And I, and I know you know that too. That's why we're, I think it's great that we have to review everything and we're giving everybody the benefit of the doubt.
Listen, it'd be great if we don't collect anything because everyone's controlling.
Correct. And, and I think the numbers will go down. I really do, you know. Because like you saw in the first video, it's herd mentality. Well, that first car that got a citation, they're going to stop now. So everybody behind them will stop. So we're, and it, it's timing. It's that same bus stop every day on Narsetown Road. Chances are those same people are seeing that bus every day. So we're going to see improvement. The one, the ones that blow you away are, you know, the, the Woodit Pond Road, McKean Road. Cedar Hill Road, you know, where just people just go right through it. So, thank you very much.
We appreciate you sharing that. Are there any additional staff updates? No? Okay. Supervisor comments, Tessie?
Yeah, so much. So, you know, tonight's another great example of all the hard work our staff are doing and it really makes a big difference. You know, how, how much progress the township is making. So I thank all the different departments and Mimi, of course. And the chief for your department's excellent, excellent work. You know, defending the First Lady and exhibiting such great community. You know, making us proud of you and especially when the other states are taking notice. That's, that's really wonderful. On my social media feeds, I always say, I live in Lower Gwinnett. It's the best place in the world to live and come, come visit. So I don't really mean that come visit. I don't want, but, you know, it does make me proud. So that's, that's all.
Can you, Tessie? Me? I, yeah, I echo what Tessie said and please pass along our appreciation to your whole team. Also want to thank the Veterans Day Committee for putting together a wonderful ceremony over the weekend. It was great to see, you know, everybody come together and, and sort of have the opportunity to celebrate and, and honor folks in the service. So thanks to everybody who put hard work into that. Thank you, Melinda. And your team, Mimi, everybody for helping make sense of the budget. It's always very overwhelming and. It's nice for us to be able to see it kind of crystal clear in those charts. So thank you. Thanks, John.
Mimi?
Really just everything that was already said. And a couple of weeks ago, it was the volunteer reception. Just, oh, thank all the volunteers as well as all the staff. You guys are absolutely amazing.
First key? Sorry.
Different than anyone else. Yeah, ditto everyone.
I want to, I want to echo thanks to the Veterans Day Committee. They put on a wonderful event and the weather cooperated. So we had a very pleasant. Morning, kind of celebrating and uplifting and hearing stories of our veterans and their contribution to ensure that we live in a free society. Want to also think, I think what stuck out to me is at our Veterans Day event, there was multiple events happening on Saturday. We still saw that our Community Response Unit, our police officers were present. We saw that our public's works were present and ensuring that it went off without a hitch and. Stayed and broke down. So a lot of the work that goes, that our staff do behind the scenes that goes unnoticed, but it always looks nice. It's always beautiful and it's always presented in a very professional manner. Very appreciative and grateful for that because I know that it was, it was a Saturday, you know, that they didn't need to be up in the early morning, setting things up for us, breaking things down. But the same goes to our police who. You know, our, our average patrolmen who are helping us to deal with and accommodate visitors from out of town from DC, very public elected. We appreciate the fact that we are recognized for our hospitality, our professionalism, all of that.
We appreciate the fact that we are recognized for our hospitality, our professionalism, all of that. Just, again, it's a testament to the type of community that we live in and we're thankful and grateful.
Yes, and our community partners, our community partners, including Pastor Kwan, Bethel and Baptist. We already said it, but I want to continuously thank Melinda for the budget. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. And I want to acknowledge that we did get, get another grant from DCNR. So I think all of the staff that goes into putting that together, but especially Jamie, who I know has taken the lead in a lot of our grant applications, we have had a significant influx of grant monies and we couldn't do that without you. It helps us in planning and beautifying our community and actually all these dreams and plans that we have, you guys are helping us execute. We greatly appreciate that. That, like to make a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned.